Six oh two will call the meeting to order and pause for a moment of silent reflection. We'll stand to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Willie, will you lead us into the roll call information forum?
I will be glad to. Steve Denny.
Here.
Jerry Burmeister.
Here.
Brian Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Gag.
Here.
Blank seat.
We currently only have four members of the town council. We will be having a caucus next Friday at four thirty in town council chambers for the Republicans to name the replacement for Corey Hall. I guess just as a point of notice, we should know that if for some reason the four of us go to a tie vote tonight, Willie gets to pass the deciding. And he's been waiting.
Been waiting.
Been waiting three.
Years for this, so time might be your lucky night. Okay, so we have four out of four members here and we have a clerk treasurer. It's two one seven.
Okay.
Thank you.
In your Google Drive, we have the minutes from the February meeting. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding those?
I make a motion to accept the memo.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the meetings from the minutes from the February twenty twenty five meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Moving on to the clerk treasurer's report.
Well, you have the check register in there and all the bills we paid for January, and that's about all we have tonight. Karen, do we have anything else?
Yep. We just recently closed out twenty twenty four, so we are still kind of in a backlog getting the start of twenty twenty five underway. Do I have a motion to approve the claims as presented from January?
Make the motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second to approve the claims from the month of January twenty twenty five. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Moving on to department reports, we will start with Chief Mark Barr.
Good evening.
Hello.
My report's kind of interesting because there's so much that happens between the time I write the report and now. So I'm a month behind, so I'm gonna fill in some March items that have come up. Officer Swearengen, Officer Zane Sparks, and Trevor Hughes have both completed their FTO, which is their field training portion. They've now been released to their night shift, so they're out riding alone, doing police stuff. And Sergeant Isaacs, of course, is their supervisor, but they're doing excellent. Great addition to the department and the town. They both live in town. I don't know if everybody knew that, so it's a good thing also. Officer Ebbe returned to duty on light duty, but that was a month ago. He's now, today he actually was working the roads, so Officer Ebbe's back on the streets and doing fine. I also interjected about looking for property for a new police department. I was asked to go look at the park property on sixty seven North of Hanksville just to see if it was an option. The park already has plans for that, so that'll be taken off the list of prospect land. Also wanted to point out that yesterday and today was the Ross Morlock trial of the shooting of Jerry Branson a year ago. And I know as of right now, they're in deliberation, so the jury's out right now deciding the fate of Mr. Morlock. And total dispatch incidents were a thousand eighty-five. Adult and criminal arrests were sixty-three, and that involved twenty-two adults. No juvenile arrests in the last month. Then you have the other numbers. Any questions you may have?
Chief, with the addition of the two new, how many does that bring you up to?
Fifteen. Fifteen.
Fifteen.
And how they split as far as days, nights?
Just we work the night shift and the day shift, so we have how many on nights out of this?
Six.
Yeah.
Six officers on a night shift. Three are scheduled every single night unless somebody takes a day off.
Are the. Between vacations and personal time.
Chief, the property at sixty-seven, I heard you say that the park has plans for it, but otherwise is that property that you would have some interest in or no?
So. It's high visibility from sixty-seven. It's somewhat secluded. I don't like a lot of neighbors to the police department. I know that sounds kind of strange, but I don't need. We have a lot of victims come to our property and different things like that, so being right downtown, prayed them across the street type stuff. So I do like the seclusion of it. I kind of like the location to getting out on sixty-seven and be able to move into the town. There was also discussion at the industrial park. We already own that land, so there's some options out there. We've also talked about staying where we're at and doing some kind of construction on that property. And then it comes down to how to pay for it. And there's a couple of different ways, either lease buybacks. That's the way McCordville did, and I know we talked about it with Fredericks. They offered that. But then there's also discussion that if our property is taken over by the electric department, then the police department can dip into electric money, so there's that avenue too.
Size wise, like acres?
McCord, and I keep going back to McCordville. It's the one agency nearby that has built what we need. It's on three acres. I have it all. I have the whole schematic and everything. Again, when we get to the point of looking at land, McCordville invited all of you and the police commissioner, anybody I want to bring to come look at their facility.
Just so you know, as for the trial, I spoke with Judge Hoppy at length last night. He was beyond impressed with Jerry Branson's testimony and how good he was in trial, so.
Good.
So you know.
Well, what's interesting, Jerry also has a kidney stone that's huge. And he had two stents put in. I know this is medical stuff, but he'll tell you. But he's testifying yesterday post-op. So I'm glad that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, he's, but he's up there now. Of course, he's definitely interested, and we'll probably go up soon as this is over. Thank you.
Anything else to mark? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't see Aaron here, and I don't know team as well enough to know if Aaron is on teams. Okay, Aaron's on the teams. The Google Drive has Aaron's report in there. So we will move on to staff report and start with the planning department.
So. Based on your input, we've got more extensive reports coming before you. And the way we plan on doing this is we'll start with Hannah, Denise, and Carrie. And they'll go under over projects that are in the process, whether they're under contract or there's activity that may be of interest to you or the town. And then that'll roll in at the end, town manager report. And then we'll go over things that we're looking forward to or looking at or studying or looking at the feasibility. And we just want to put that on your radar, and so you can start to think about it and have information and questions. So anyway, we'll start with Hannah. Each one of these slides, each one of these slides is, like I said, a project. So we can go as fast or as slow as you guys want to go through them, okay? Part of it will be their normal stuff.
Traditional.
The traditional. Oh, there's a delay. So if you have any questions along the way with the project slides, feel free to stop me or if you want to wait till the end of each of our sections with any questions, that's totally fine too. Just let me know. So the usual building permit summary, it's split into month and yearly. So February is not very busy for us with building permits. There's just not a lot going on, and you can see that in both twenty-four and twenty-five. Once spring rolls around, we'll be getting three times as many building permits because fences and pools and sheds are going in. So now that for planning commission in February. We had one petition for a rezone for a church property at the end of six hundred that was continued to March. You will be seeing that this evening. It was given a favorable recommendation, but from February it was continued to a later time. For favorable recommendations for UDO amendments, we had a couple amendments they voted on in February that you've already voted on for the accessory structures and tree planting requirements. BZA saw two conditional uses in February. One was for a hotel use on two parcels at the Heritage Hub property, which is on Henderson and Heritage Way below Starbucks. You've probably seen their sign out there. And then one for a dog groomer shop at the Falls Park Plaza. Historic preservation did not meet. Urban forestry, Denise is going to talk later about the Arbor Day Foundation Tree Campus program as well as the Tree City USA Award. This is our fifteenth year, which is really fantastic that we've been awarded that, so she's going to talk a little more about that later. In site plans, we have one site plan submitted on two fourteen. This is for the La La Gas Station. This is going in on sixty-seven behind CVS. They'll also have access onto State Street. We are, usually those reviews are about thirty days long with staff and departments. So we're going to be sending them our first round of comments for them to update probably early next week at some point. Secondary flats, none in February, but just a quick update on Heritage Hub. That's the hotel property. It's being split up into five lots with their own private roadway. So I had sent them an updated set of comments, and I'm kind of just waiting for them to respond to me. And then our subdivisions are moving right along. Warmer weather is going to bring more construction in those areas. Arabian Point is very close to being finished. It has two homes that are in near final inspection phase. So those will be done by spring. And then there is one lot that the owner is holding for, you know, a very custom project. He has no plans under it right now, but he is going to build sidewalks on the outside of it to finish our main street project when the sidewalks go in, which Denise is also going to talk a little more about later. So our first project is the US thirty-six sixty-seven Traffic and Pet Enhancements. This is a PE phase, which is preliminary engineering. This is a project the town has been involved with, with both NDOT and MCAG, which is Madison County Council of Governments for about five years now. Includes the added travel, excuse me, added travel lanes, landscape medians, control arms for signal improvements, and a pedestrian crossing improvements as well. So this is a project we had an opportunity to kind of hop on later in the game. NDOT was beginning with the added travel lanes project, and we kind of piggybacked on to that to do pedestrian enhancements as well with the project and some beautification, things that they might not typically do with a project. Right now, we're in phase three, which is environmental. It takes a really long time. We might be done sooner than May. They are moving pretty quickly on it, but that is close to being done. So. Next, I have a sub-project of that sixty-seven project. It involves right-of-way services only. So this is acquiring the necessary right-of-way that we need for the pedestrian implements. Haydenway Trail is kind of the nickname of this project because a large portion of the right-of-way we're requiring is to get a trail from sixty-seven up to Water Street. Particularly, this whole thing interconnects the high school to like the park and library amenities. We are awaiting the NDOT master contract. That's a minimum forty-five days for them to assess that. So there's no set timeline on this yet, but we have been told by the consultant that they plan on getting this phase of this project done by the end of the year. And next we have the US thirty-six reroute relocation, Water Street Intersection Planning Study. This is relatively new. MCAG is pushing for us to do this study because they have funds available and we also have some development very interested in this area. It's the property between Water Street and thirty-six, kind of along three hundred there. So that it's about fifty or sixty acres of agricultural land. We've had in a comp plan or a plan somewhere that the town has had since at least two thousand and six that there is a potential to reroute a leg of thirty-six up to Water Street and also improve the Water Street intersection with that. So this is kind of the pre-pre-engineering planning study to see what options we have to do that and what kind of developments might need to occur around that, any sort of tertiary roadways as well. But I'm sure we're all aware that Water Street is a pretty gnarly intersection, and it could use an upgrade. So that's what this project is. It's essentially a master plan of land and roadways for that particular area. The State Street Traffic Signal Improvement Program, I know we've been talking about this for a while. We've been working with A and F Engineering for a signal study between Main Street and Broadway to improve traffic flow and install new pedestrian crossings, ADA safety implements, as well as putting in new decorative black mast arms. These have no slack line. They're usually powder coated black. And also engineering the mid-block crossing that we've talked about and a fire signal at Broadway, so that would be for the engines. We haven't quite ironed that out, what that implement is going to look like, but it helps them get out onto State Street easier than the implement they have now, which people are kind of sign-blind to. And I know they've had issues getting out onto State, so we're trying to kind of clump that all into redoing traffic signals essentially. And so secondary phase of that is construction. We do just only have an estimate on this right now. We can use CCMG dollars for this entire project. So we're waiting until engineering is completed, and then we'll be able to get some construction phases more tied down for you. But it's a general estimate right now, but again, seventy-five, twenty-five with CCMG dollars. Six hundred west reconstruction right now, all that we have banning under contract to do is what's called a thirty percent preliminary engineering. So essentially, we know six hundred is going to get widened and improved due to the traffic that's going to be out there with the new subdivision. So until we get to that point, the developer is going to move faster than we are. So making sure that their grading for their one entrance onto six hundred will match our plans is what this is going for. Essentially so that we don't have to rip out an entire entryway into their neighborhood when we go to improve six hundred. And then again, the construction phase will be determined once the PE part is done and will include typical CCMG timelines. We're probably looking to apply January of twenty twenty-six or the next phase, which is spring of twenty twenty-six. Our business park trail. This is one that we've worked with planning. Let's see, twenty twenty-two is when we started with MCAG getting this going again. This was something that had started quite a while ago, maybe twenty fifteen-ish. I don't know why it got shelved, but MCAG had dollars available to be able to reopen this program and have a solid funding source. So this is a trail, pedestrian trail, which is ten feet wide or if that can't fit six-foot wide sidewalks on either side of the road to connect the pedestrian bridge we have over sixty-nine right now to our downtown. So there will be quite a few. This is the general layout of it. I didn't break it down into phases, but this is a general layout. The existing trail stops there right north of McDonald's, and then there's nothing else to the east of that. But you'll see a lot of developers in this area when they go to build will be required to build their portion of it. So for example, the hotel that's going in on this site here, oh, this doesn't work on that TV, never mind. Yeah. This property here, so they'll be responsible for building their portion. As this develops next to Starbucks, they've already built their portion of it. We'll all build this. This is all town property in Duke Eastments. So we have a lot of potential for developers to build a really big chunk of this. But essentially, you know, once development happens even further west near Baker's Point or the Gaines property, we'll be able to connect east to west really, really easily. So that's moving forward. It's in PE phase right now, which is three to five years. There tends to be hiccups along the way. You run into stuff you didn't think you'd run into. There's a lot of environmental potential for indigenous items that might be found, things like that. So we have to take that all into consideration with NDOT's rent take processes. So this is the proposed construction phasing of that, that just we had banning create in general. This is subject to federal funding. The estimate is at about thirteen million dollars, but again, that's subject to if funds get approved. So these are some general estimates and how we've clumped together the phases as best we can because we have a max limit, I think, with MCAG of what we can do with each round of money that they give us.
One thing I wanted to make is talk about the funding for construction. But generally, the rule of thumb is if you get MCAG, federal dollars, NDOT dollars for design and the environmental, it's pretty much going to there may be some delays or whatever, but they're investing heavily into the design. So therefore, they're motivated also to see it constructed. And a lot of these dollars will be smaller as developers build instead of us using public dollars. So one of the nice things about this trail.
Right. And these are all, we would, you know, even if these were the exact estimates, we only pay twenty percent, and it's not a lump sum. It's invoiced over time. So that's another way to make, kind of stretch the funding.
We think at most we'll only be on the boat each year for about two hundred and fifty pounds.
So I'm sure you have seen our new windows, or if you haven't, go take a look at them. We had the opportunity with our HPC grant that we get from food and beverage dollars and the county for the town to apply to get some rehab work done to this building. So we got nine new windows installed. We have the structural floor up above this that's going to be repaired as well. And then after all of that work is done, Brick Mason is coming in to re-tuck point, repair and reseal this entire building and add the brick parapets that are missing historically back onto the roof. We're hoping to recycle some of the brick that was bricking in the windows because it's way up there. It's difficult to see, and you know, we can use it to at least build the foundation of it. If we want to put some historic brick on the outside, that's fine. But trying to kind of just recycle some of those so they don't go to waste. So these are the original pictures of the building. The one on the right is the actual original. This one on the left is much later. You can see there's a Model T, I think. There's electric light poles. So it's progressed a little bit, so we're adding those parapets back up on the top, those brick stacks, and then the nine windows that were missing and bricked in. The bottom floor, not, there's just not much I can do with that right now. I don't know what they've done to it with having bricked it over and put in wonky windows. But at least we were able to do something on the top, which has been really, really impressive. Just it's amazing what a few windows will do. So those are getting painted next week, and then they will be fixing this floor. Next, we have our pedestrian crossing signal pilot. So we are purchasing and installing one hard-wired pedestrian crossing signal and one solar crossing signal as kind of a pilot project to see which product works best. These will be located, the first one will be at three hundred west at the middle school where they cross over to go to the athletic fields. And then the other will be, excuse me, on Falls Park Drive in between East Street and the park office where you can cross into that woodland area. It's kind of a mid-block crossing. There's not a whole lot of good visibility there. So we figured that would be a good place to try one. Eventually, what we would like to do is any intersections that aren't kind of one of these major ones that have a light that has the pedestrian crossing on it, which, you know, is going to be happening with the NDOT project as well. There's going to be a lot of new pedestrian features. We like to implement these. An example, you know, I could think of is like at Broadway near the firehouse. Like, there's a lot of people going up and down Broadway, but there's not really a way right now to get people to notice you or stop. So we have some ideas of other places in mind, but we wanted to see how these worked first. Our comprehensive plan. Due for an update, seven years old. This is a project we started along with our downtown plan this year in January. We've gotten through phase one with our steering committee as well as having the public open house. Our steering committee will be meeting at the end of this month. But our comprehensive plan is to guide development based on public input, best practices. It's good to keep. Every five years is usually a good, a good time to update or at least revisit your comp plan. And, you know, Rachel put it really well. It puts Pendleton in the driver's seat of what we'd like to see done instead of being driven. Clearly outlines what our community's goals are. And so same with the downtown revitalization plan. This is just more honed into the downtown area. You know, kind of just our general business district down here. A little more focused on some more minutia-type things, programming of space, historic preservation, infill, aesthetic, streetscaping, culture, things like that. So this one will be done in tandem with the comp plan and is slated to be done in January of next year as well. Our National Register of Historic Places inventory is also being updated by a student at Ball State University Historic Preservation Office. This inventory has not been updated since nineteen ninety-one. It was written for us becoming a national register area. And a lot of those buildings are probably not existing anymore or they've been heavily modified. And HPC is really keen to know what they're working with to see what kind of projects and goals that they can kind of set for those areas with knowing what we have. So this is going to have a survey for each building with guidelines for rehab, preservation, and things like that, which is, we've never had anything like that before. So we're, they were very impressed with the level of detail that the students are going to be getting into on every single building. So if you don't know, the National Register is our original town boundaries. It's just about all of our, what you'd call downtown fabric. A lot of it is housing. It's not all of it, but it's kind of that heart down here. So it's, it's a lot of buildings. So if you see them out, they are going to be doing survey work with pictures and not going on any private property. They will have vests, but that's what they're working on. Sports Complex, we worked on this a little last year, and we're hoping to finish it up this year. There are two businesses within the park that really don't have access to a public right-of-way. They're coming off of park property, which can be a bit of a liability issue. Also, W Athletics has a very oddly shaped and cut-up property that we were trying to clean up. We have a really large electric easement in a portion of it that we're trying to take out and just clean up this property for that person. The hope is also that we have a Candlewood Drive extension that, you know, I'll show you here. So this would be the potential Candlewood Drive. That's right there at the very top, and then there's the vaguely property. So this is what we're trying to redraw. This would be absorbed by the park because it's not buildable. It's not developable. And that is their main point of egress and ingress and egress. But this parcel right here is mostly just electric easement. It can't be built in. There's not a lot you can do with it, so we're working to work with the property owner to kind of slice this up. Eventually, this could be where a road could go to access Candlewood Drive and have secondary access for these properties or sole access. It's up to them. So that we're working on. I did touch base with the owner and resent him this. So I'm going to hopefully meet with him in the next week or so and just see what his comments are, if he's okay with it. We'll move forward with our engineer to get this plotted, and then anything else we need to do after that. We're looking to rent another parking lot for public parking. That would be the Citizens Bank Parking Lot. And I just counted, I believe there are forty-three spaces available. Now, I know that the owner has talked about reserving some just for his bank customers and employees, which is totally fine. So we've approached them. We've given them a copy of the lease that we use on other properties that we rent to get their feedback. And then we will have the legal department execute a lease for us, get that all written up and ready to go. So hopefully that should be done by spring. It shouldn't take all that long, but in time for, you know, festivals and things like that, that might be really, really nice. Martin Parking Lot Revitalization, so I'm sure you've seen what Tyler Martin's been doing to his building over here, removing the ATM. He just got a grant from HPC on Tuesday to do a massive brickwork project on the front. Very impressive. And then also rehab, he'll be rehabbing the small building next door. So this project, we, Carrie is going to speak to more of the alleyway project that PAS and Tyler are working on with the town. This is more getting rid of the parking implements that are in there right now, restriping the parking lot. It was in our town lease with Tyler to take out those implements if he ever removed the ATM. So you'll see the street department over there in the next week or two doing that. It is weather dependent, but we'll see, we'll see how that goes. So hopefully it should be restripped and resurfaced by spring. uh, late spring or early summer. So just to remind you, this is the layout, um, that that Banning has come up with. We're able to put four more parking spots here now that this ATM is no longer here. Uh, Tyler does not want points of egress through his property anymore. So, um, that's where we're putting those extra parking spaces and and cutting this off so people don't go through it. Um, and then this is the alley that, it's not an alley, it used to be a drive-through, but, um, that Carrie's going to talk about the the project we're doing in here later. So, um, we'll get these hopefully done, you know, by by summer. Yeah, yeah, the added street parking in front, that'll happen in conjunction with that. Um, we have a tax park parcel acquisition. Um, so if you remember this from, oh, I think it's been two years now. We had petitioned the county commissioners to get some tax parcels that were in front of Perkey's. Their old traction, Union Traction Parcels, um, from when the rail line used to come through here. They have obviously not existed for a while or paid their taxes on it. Um, so it's been up for tax sale, um, and they, the county is interested in just, um, basically giving those to us. So we would use them for right-of-way improvements, pedestrian things, um, any utilities we may or may not ever need to run through there. Um, but it would probably help to to have those in this corner. So I've gotten an email from, um, the auditor, just kind of on the next steps we need to take to restart that process. Um, they have a lot of noticing things, you know, hundred ninety days here, ninety days there. Um, so it might take a year with the red tape, but we should be able to get the process restarted fairly quickly. And then lastly, I have, um, HPC's Historic Marker Project. Um, HPC wanted to, uh, look at getting a historic marker made for, um, commemorating when Kennedy stopped here on North Pendleton Avenue on his presidential route. Um, so they authorized the language and the payment, uh, to get that placard made. Um, so we have gotten through that. I'm working with the, um, sign contractor right now. The only difficulty we're running into is the Falls insignia. Uh, it's not digital anywhere, so I'm trying to figure out how to get that to them to print it on there. That's our old town branding, uh, before things were digital. So I, that's the only holdup that we're having with that. So as soon as I can find that or recreate it or do something that he can work with, um, we'll order the sign after that. I'm guessing a lead times probably a couple of weeks to a month, depending on how busy they are because it is an embossed, uh, piece of metal. It might take them longer. Um, and then we will have the street department install it where that sign is right now and move that sign to the west side of North Pendleton Avenue. Okay. So do you have any questions for me on my projects before Denise goes into hers?
These places will be on Tyler's property once it's completed.
I don't know how many are there right now, but it'll be that plus four.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll actually have, we should have. Yeah, we, and then we should have not just one, um, ADA accessible space, we should have two. Um, I know that was still kind of in the works on on technically how many we needed and how big the alley kind of project needed to be. But, um, there's, there's more than enough room for ADA as well. Yeah.
And I guess I'll back up to kind of the beginning of your.
Sure. Yeah. Do you want me to go to a certain side for you?
Well, what I'm going to reference is the both traffic signals.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do we eventually, are we going to push-button at those lights?
Yeah, yeah. So those will have an entire pedestrian aspect to them. Um, if you've seen the the kind of newer clamshells we have out here right now that I think those got hit and we had to put a new one in, it has a countdown timer. So these will all have countdown timers, um, and they'll be at Main, they'll be at Pendleton, um, and they will be push-button. Um, and the way that that, the the timing software works with the lights, uh, we're going to kind of work through. There's options on how you can do that, since we don't have designated left turn lane arrows. Um, so there's kind of, you can kind of mess with it a lot, but it it'll be a lot better than than what it is now.
Very much needed. I'm so happy to see.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Have you found out anything about the audio signals?
No.
Okay.
I think if those are, um, if those are part of ADA or ProWAG, they'll, we'll have to do it because CCMG dollars are from NDOT, correct?
I would like to know before we order, if we, if that, you know, that's something that we have to add on ourselves, like to have that audio capability. I just think that it's really nice to have the.
Yeah.
Walk.
Walk, yeah.
I mean, just that audio, uh, we do have visually impaired people within our community and visitors that. I think that would make a difference. And also, if you're driving with the windows down, it's always nice to hear.
Right, that kind of.
When you're ready to turn right and somebody's standing there.
I mean, I would, I would imagine it would be something, and there might be different levels of what that is. Or one is a beep, one is saying walk, one is something else where we could select that. But I would imagine to be ADA ProWAG, you have to have some implement like that, that we would just have to include.
Okay, awesome.
And, you know, I think if we continue to grow, I mean, there's.
Oh, yeah.
Comes down to safety and I think they're.
Yeah.
Needed of both lights. Yeah.
And I think too, the mid-block crossing, um, you know, is also another implement that will help with pedestrians. You know, we all see people froggering across the road here, you know, even though there's lights nearby. Um, and so we're, we're hoping that that mid-block crossing, it'll have flashers. Um, it'll have kind of a bump out to make things very visible. Um, it'll also have a stormwater aspect to it too, which I like. Um, it is affecting storm flow. So, um, that is also another implement that I think too will help with pedestrians as well as, um, vehicles. If you see something narrowing, like a a crosswalk coming in, um, it's called like a a road diet. Um, even though you're not narrowing the lanes of driving, it's a visual, uh, kind of optical illusion that will slow people down. Um, hopefully, that's what it shows usually. So that might also help with some of the speediness through here. I I know people speed down Sage Street.
Glad to see we're adding more parking also. I'm glad to see we're adding more parking.
Yeah, yeah. And there might also be some possibilities that, I mean, this was just what Banning had created. If Tyler wants to kind of finagle those around, he might be able to fit in like one or two more extra spaces if they're like parallel spaces um, or something like that. But that's just kind of what Banning gave us with their, um, turning radius software. But yeah, four extra spaces, yeah.
That along with the bank. I mean, I, you know, parking we can get at times.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So that's why, I mean, I know with that mid-block, we are going to lose two spaces, but we're gaining eight. So we're kind of only net negative a couple, which is, um, you know, good.
Yeah.
So. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the pointer, the industrial pointer. Good evening. All right. Hello. Uh, next project that we have to share with you is our Road Impact Zone Improvement Plan Update. Um, we, um, are working with A and F Engineering. We just started, uh, conversations with them here the past couple of months. Uh, but just kind of to explain, our town already does have a road, uh, Impact Zone Improvement Plan in place. However, per state statute, it requires us to update this plan every five years. So the town, we are ready to go ahead and move forward with our next plan, uh, and start developing that and try to get that implemented here at the end of this next year, uh, middle of, uh, twenty twenty-six. So for this, uh, type of plan, the purpose is, uh, to analyze current traffic conditions. Those are conditions of roadway and, uh, intersection traffic. We look, uh, ten years out for projected growth and future traffic impacts from new development that's anticipated within that time span. Also, uh, we will be looking at identifying road improvement needs and establishing an equitable, uh, fee structure to be able to fund these necessary improvements. This study, we're going to take those findings, we're going to work with the steering committee very tightly throughout the entire process, which will help guide the development, uh, for this five-year plan. Um, right now, uh, we are looking at the scope of service. Uh, we are reviewing that in detail. We're going to, uh, review that here this week. We're going to get it to our legal counsel and to determine if, you know, we're ready to go ahead and move forward, if any changes need to be made. And as you see here on the slide, there are three phases. So the first phase, they're going to collect the data that will take place here in April and May. It's very important that we get this going because we want to do it while school is in session. They are intentionally going to hold off not doing that here in the month of March with all the spring breaks. We want to make sure that we have the highest and most normal traffic, um, to go into this plan. And then the second phase would be Phase B. They're going to collect all this data, they're going to start working with the steering committee and start formulating this plan. And then once we get that final deliverable here towards the end of the year, then, uh, we will then need to incorporate and establish then the new ordinance that will be, um, the enforcement of that plan. Just remember kind of how it was in the past, is that there is a six-month lag. So once it is approved and adopted, uh, by ordinance, then there's six months' suspension that we won't be able to enforce it. We could still enforce the existing plan. However, as far as the new plan goes, uh, we'll have to wait six months before it, uh, is effective. And, um, so we are hoping to be able to get on board, to get under contract here in the next thirty days and be able to get things rolling. And we'll be getting back with you as far as forming a steering committee, uh, for that plan. The second.
I have one thing, just so you know, this is the study that's required by state law so that we have an impact fee.
Yes.
And it also, the study determines what that fee amount should be. Some of you are now experts on this. I, I'd like you to remind you that's what it's for.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, but driven, driven by state statutes thirteen hundred series, so, yeah. Working through that here this next year. Uh, the next program is our Lead Service Line Inventory Program. Uh, we are working with Commonwealth Engineering. They are consultants on this program. This is a very extensive evolving federal program mandate. It's tied to a strict regulation and enforcement through EPA. And, uh, right now, we're in phase for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven. Within that phase is, uh, public notification requirements and our inventory. So our inventory would be for reducing an inventory of all of our water service lines, which right now we've got a little bit over twenty-three hundred. When we first started putting this program together about a year ago, we had around twenty-one hundred. Now then we've, uh, updated it here the end of twenty-four. And so we've got a little bit over twenty-three hundred in that database. A part of that, so to date, um, in response to this, it's the EPA Lead and Copper Rule Revision. In nineteen ninety-one, it was first created, then the revisions came out in twenty twenty-one. And again, it's evolving and changing and they're adding new, uh, implementations or requirements. So in twenty twenty-four, it's even further heightened. We expect here in the next few years, more regulations going to come out, next steps are going to come out. So right now, what we are required to identify is the service line material on both public and private sides. So that goes from, and I'll show you on the next screen here. Uh, oh, got such a little pointer here. So right here, uh, from the water main to the water meter is what we consider the public side. From the water meter to the the premise, or if by chance that water meter is inside the residence, then that is what is called the private side. We have to identify both. And we cannot, uh, we're not done with our homework until we have identified, uh, both sides um, as either PVC, copper, a B-LN, uh, we've got several, uh, that are galvanized. And so according to those identifications and those identification me- measures, we import that into our database. So we have to, as of last October, we had to submit that to IDEM. And that's through our one-twenty water, uh, database there. And so we have to continue to update that, uh, which means that we need to continue to communicate with our public. We've got about seven hundred and fifty of our twenty-three hundred lines that are still left unknown. About four hundred and fifty of those are unknown on both the public and private side. But total unknowns, we need to get those, uh, eliminated. Um, and then when we do come across a lead line, we need to make sure that we're making provisions and plans for replacement of those. So that is another piece of that. Um, here is what we call the gooseneck here. A lot of those, um, connections are lead. So at this point, we're not required to identify those, but that is coming in twenty twenty-seven. So, uh, we'll keep you apprised as those, uh, requirements develop. Uh, we have, um, uh, had plans here in the next month. We had one of our water department supervisors, uh, not supervisors, but staff members, Dustin. He did an amazing job last year, feet on the ground, going door to door, trying to be able to get the survey out and be able to, uh, get those identified. He is going to resume once weather is permitting here in the next thirty days. So you're going to see him out there helping us out with this, uh, effort. And then other thing I wanted to add is, is that we did, uh, conduct here, go back here. We did conduct a, uh, an AMP, it's an Asset Management Plan and a Preliminary Engineering Board. Uh, we worked with Commonwealth on that last year. We submitted that to IFA for their, uh, SRF funding. And we did that for reasons because we wanted to see, engage where we're going to score within the state of Indiana, uh, with our, with our ratings there. We actually did pretty good. We were twenty-six on the list of about eighty-nine. So that tells us that when we're ready to make some improvements to our water utility, that could be our water treatment plant, our water lines, replacing those lead lines, we're going to score very well and be ready, uh, ready to go when funds are available. And, and the next project that we have is our various, uh, roadway improvements. Uh, this is our Community Crossings twenty-three dash two project. And this, we teamed up with Banning Engineering and Midwest Paving LLC. We are very, very close to finishing up this project. Uh, we had, uh, we hit November with weather. We had some punchless items that was not able to get addressed before the, uh, the ice and snow came. So we're going to pick that up here this month and we're hoping to be able to get that closed out. This was a grant that we received through Community Crossing. Uh, it's an NDOT-funded project and we received five hundred and thirty thousand for that grant. And that was to preserve roadway infrastructure, also address some pavement deterioration that we had, and to also ensure ultimately our safe and efficient travel. There were thirteen projects that were priority that met and, uh, made that cut for that project. There was Project One, which are mill and overlay. We had five different road sections there, uh, that received that treatment. And then Project Two was our seal, or, excuse me, fog seal, but then it was chip seal and and fog overlay there with some heavy patching and striping. So we have two roadways in our suburban areas that need some attention to some patchwork on the potholes. So once we get that, we are going to be ready to be able to wrap this and, uh, close the books on that. And the, uh, and I am not doing a good job on that.
You're doing a good job.
That's what this thing, so, um. All right, our next project is our Pendleton McCarty Drain Project. This is actually our last phase with our, uh, first two phases that we had here in about twenty twenty-three. Uh, we started this grant process through IFA. It was in twenty twenty-one when this kicked out. We were ready to go. A month later, we applied for it and we received a combination of seven hundred eighty thousand for this project. It was split between Projects One and Two, which received six hundred thirty thousand. And then the smaller, last piece of the leg of the project was a hundred and fifty thousand. So we just went under amended contract with IFA to receive those additional dollars. For this particular project, for this piece, we're working with United Construction, uh, Construction Service. We actually worked with them on the first piece of the project. So it's wonderful. They're familiar with this project and they're ready to be able to finish it out with us. On this project, uh, there was a lot of flooding in this area. So we had some, uh, collapsed, uh, deteriorated drain, uh, piping there that ran from the west side of State Road sixty-seven, all the way then going in, uh, eastbound then across and under the CSX Railroad. Then it came in there where Amvet's, uh, sit, uh, crossed Broadway, crossed the build there to South Pendleton Avenue, to the pond, and then it then outfalls to Fall Creek. So what had happened was those, uh, the county drain in that area had collapsed and it was no longer functional. So we abandoned that pipeline and then we've replaced it with new. So the first two pieces, uh, went basically from the pond all the way up to Amvet's. And then now we're going to start back up. We're going to connect them where we left off there at Amvet's. And then we're going to bore under the CSX Railroad as well as, uh, State Road sixty-seven, which is NDOT Road, which actually made us qualified for this project. The piece of the project has to touch and affect and make, uh, positive impact for state roadway. So it was just perfect, uh, timing and placement for our needs in the area. So in doing that, we're going to be boring under, we're going to have a twenty-four inch, um, casing. Um, and then, uh, our interior, uh, pipe that's going to be cased in a thirty-six inch pipe that's going to get bored. And so that's going to happen about April. So I told them, do not do this until I see this. So if you want to be a part of watching that, uh, come with me. I think it's going to be pretty phenomenal, uh, to watch that. Uh, so we're really excited to be able to wrap this up. And, uh, currently, uh, we're looking at about two to three week window. We're wrapping up some permitting with CSX. As you see, in between Phase One and Two and versus the start of Phase Three, there was about a year, uh, and a half, uh, time span uh, that we, uh, uh, had to kind of patiently wait to get through. And the reason why is because we had to engage in an approach agreement with CSX. Uh, so, uh, And so, that was, took a little bit of time, some legalities with that, as well as had to get some permitting underway. So, we are hoping that they're going to break ground, start work here next couple of weeks, and we'll have it wrapped by the end of June, maybe July. This next image here is just kind of an illustration of these phases. So, just as I said, it's kind of like this pond that sits right here. Then, west of Pendleton Avenue, reformatory, right there on that roadway. Another key point to this is that we were allowed to increase our funding for this because of the roadway intersection needed to have some improvements there and a culvert there. So, then the, the drain then was rerouted here. You'll see in the black, it's kind of where the old county drain used to run. But then in the blue, then we've tied up here, and then we're going to start right at this point at Amvet's. Go under the railroad, under the road, and then it'll allow us to then connect over to the other side. And then, we'll be able to give our sheds to drain exactly how they were originally designed. The next project we've got is Elm Street, Main Street Reconstruction Project. This is one that Hannah Rose mentioned earlier. This is our twenty-four dash two project. We are teaming up with Banning Engineering and DC Construction. We just held our pre-construction meeting, so they are almost ready to go. We've got several materials that they're gonna have to purchase for this product, or for this project. And a part of this is going to be on Elm Street. It's gonna be mill and overlay. Main, or excuse me, Main Street, mill and overlay. And then Elm Street's gonna be a significant reconstruction project. For Elm Street, we are going to have a significant drain, drainage plans that are going to then be in the centerline of that road. We have a water line that's going to get replaced, as well as we're gonna have relocations of our electric poles to be able to allow for sidewalk improvements on both sides of Elm Street. This is going to allow us to connect that storm drain that we just went through. It's the storm drain that was there along the railroad bed. UCS had provided that for us, and we're going to connect into the most northern piece of that. It's gonna then run across Elm Street then to back in the lumberyard. There was an inlet there. So, we'll be able to pull any flooding and collection of water there into that drain system. And it's also going to go up to North Pendleton Avenue. We're going to then be able to have connection to inlets there, North Pendleton Avenue. And then, that way, this whole conveyance system is going to then work, connect onto Main Street. And then, there is a creek that is behind Arabian Point. So, it's all planned, to all work together, and hopefully be completed here sometime the end of November. It needs to be substantially completed by the end of October, and then closed out by the end of November is what the contract is. Just look out. We will, in April, be having a public informational meeting here real soon and getting notices out to those residents in that area. The next project is, oh, and one thing I do want to stress here for our construction project, it's very important that when we take a look at these and we, first, we look at priority, what is our top needs of attention, but yet, we also look at a well-rounded holistic approach to it. While we're cutting open these roads, while we're, you know, disturbing the sidewalks and some of the utilities, we look at all different areas. So, you'll see that some of these, we have a seventy-five twenty-five eligible coverage for community crossings. However, we want to, while we're in there, there might be some ineligible pieces that may not get covered by NDOT, but we want to include it and take care of it while we're in there. So, that is very important for, you know, the work that we do. Okay, the next one is North Heritage Way Construction. This is with Serenity Development and Banning Engineering. This is a property that is just east of I sixty-nine. That's west from us here. It falls there at the North Heritage Way Roundabout. It's about a seventy-acre property that is split now into three separate parcels, and it runs into the north. This property owner, we had the, what we call the Serenity Community Development Agreement, that we went through a process, pretty in-depth process last year for a TIF agreement with this property owner. But a part of this agreement was a roadway improvement. And a part of this roadway improvement, it is to where this developer is going to drive the construction to develop a four-lane boulevard that runs through end to end of his property. This is an agreement, and it's structured on the idea that he has been willing to improve above and beyond what is necessary to serve his development. So, when you see this split here of thirty-seven and sixty-three percent, it's important that we then support this because he's, he's providing something that has been a long-term goal for our town, and it's actually embedded in our impact fee plan. So, that will be reimbursed through the road impact fees. And along with this roadway improvement, it's going to be a lot of utility work. So, he's putting in water lines. He's putting in a sewer line and a lift station at that. He's putting electric. He's putting sidewalks, trail systems, and stormwater detention management there as well. So, he is going to be starting part or Phase One. These are kind of projected costs here as far as the estimates here for each of the phases, each of the legs of this improvement. Keep in mind that it's gonna be subject to development and how that comes in and completion of that roadway. It's a big piece of that agreement. And right now, he is under review for Phase One Road Construction Plan. And we also are looking at their DCCRs. That's those declarations, covenants, and conditions and restrictions relative to the storm infrastructure, which was a big need to make sure that we got that covered going forward. So, once this is completed and approved, the developer's looking at improving, start improvement and movement on this in the spring. And Phase One, just kind of illustrating, it's gonna be from the roundabout to the first two supporting roadways. That's Serenity and Iron Gate there. It's about five hundred feet of road improvement that you'll start seeing develop here this next year. All right, the next project here is we got the Business Park Trail Public Space Concept feasibility. This, we also have been working with Luminant Architects and Banning Engineering. So, as we started working on that Business Park Trail project that Hannah Rose had spoke about earlier tonight, it came very apparent with us that this trail route going through the town property that was between that school corporation there, along that easement up to Fall Creek Drive, and then connecting then to where that future pedestrian bridge is anticipated to connect our west end of town down here to our downtown area and eventually to our park system. So, where that all kind of falls in place and where that's center of is the town property. We've got several acreage out there that would be prime for some type of community space. And so, this space can be envisioned for as a community park. Could be an amphitheater. It could be an arboretum. It could be an event venue. So, when we were taking a look at this, we felt that with this eighty-twenty federally funded grant program, it was very much, very crucial, and it was a key for us to take a look at this and to be able to look at the space to be able to best incorporate it within that trail system. In doing so and planning, that gives us a self-ready plan, so when that funding does come available, however, the community envisions for that space to be used, we'll be ready to go. It will help us to be able to evaluate that practical viability, identify that most desirable location for that parking and that site, as well as alignment with that trail system, and also control of access points and traffic in and out of that site. So, we had really enjoyed working with our local stakeholders, local theater, musical, band, cheer, school, administration, event management, to be able to get some initial impact and, or input and feedback as far as what their needs and their envisions on how they could use that space. It could even be used as the high school graduation ceremony. So, that was very helpful, and we look forward to be able to get to this point where we can share more details with the community and be able to pull them in for further input. Our goal is to be able to kind of finalize this and at the end of the year and adopt this as our comprehensive plan when that gets updated. The next is the Keso District Master Plan. So, in this, we have not identified a consultant that we'll be working with. But in discussions with our plan commission and those board members, they expressed a high interest in developing a guiding document for the development of the land there to the west of I sixty-nine. This planning document would be more of a thirty feet in the air, a more detailed vision of what those areas could look like, how they could be developed, and what type of land uses could go in there. As you know, there's, it's an open space, and so, we really need to have some guidance as we start working with developers in those areas. So, the purpose of that planning document, like I said, would be to help guide us in that northwest, southwest quadrant of the I sixty-nine. It's going to be an extension of the I sixty-nine interchange master plan. So, we'll kind of work with that document, and we'll build upon that to help identify feasibility, land uses, concept designs, infrastructure. We're also gonna look at utility needs in those areas and help us develop some policy of those areas developed. This past fall, we put out RFP, and we're going to, we also conducted some interviews. We've asked them to revise their scope of service. We've received those. Those are under review. So, we're hoping to be able to select our consultant the next thirty-sixty days and have this planning document finalized again at the end of the year. So, we're gonna have a lot of things here, exciting things at the end of the year. It takes about a six months process. My last three here are related to urban forestry projects. So, as my role in working with our Pendleton Urban Forestry, we've got three main kind of focuses that, that we take part in. I just wanted to kind of highlight here for our tree inventory. We have a treekeeper inventory, and I encourage you to go on the website. We have this database that actually highlights all of the public trees, on-street trees, and as well as parks, cemetery, golf course trees. We have those identified in their location, their diameter, their species, their condition. And it's a great working plan because then when, we have now added in the last couple of years, a tree inventory assessment. So, we have a certified arborist that takes one-fifth of our town jurisdiction, hones in on those trees, does a three hundred and sixty inspection of those trees, makes note of changes in diameter and conditions, and then gets feedback back to me as staff of needs for attention and maintenance, or and care needs. So, it's become a really good working program the last few years and just something that we've been very, very excited about. I just think it really helps us manage our tree canopy quite well. Part of our program too is our Tree City USA program. So, this is a program that we work with Arbor Day Foundation. We work with our local school systems. We work with our local, or not our local, our local departments, but our town departments. Every department has a hand in this, in this recognition. It, it seems simple when you look at the four guiding criterias of just having an active tree board, of tree ordinance in place to govern our trees, a commitment of two dollars per capita, and celebrate Arbor Day. However, there's a lot of work that our urban forestry members put into this and to be able to make us eligible to receive this recognition. So, in, in that being said, wanted to re-say kind of what Hannah said. We just learned a couple of weeks ago that we were recognized for fifteenth year. And when you look at even larger cities and towns around us, they're, they're not even up that high in count. And it's just something that I think that as a committee and as a community, we need to be very proud of this recognition. So, the public release hasn't been received yet. So, once we get that, that, that press release, we're going to put that out, and we'll be sharing that with our Facebook, our town website and so forth. But wanted to share this great news with all of you guys first. Okay, and then my last one is our, what we call Tree Campus twelve program. This is something that our committee has been talking about for probably a year or so. We've met with other individuals that have kind of worked with this program to learn more. We teamed up with Arbor Day Foundation to kind of understand. They've kind of changed their structure a little bit this last year. And we thought that we would start with an older group. We work really closely with our Pendleton Elementary School. I know that you've seen us where we do our proclamation and celebration of Arbor Day in the fall. We then do our poster contest, and we're actually right now doing Healthy Trees, Healthy Me. I've got the fifteen posters that are top that we've got to choose the, the top five. And then, we'll submit that school winner to the state here next week. Well, it's April first. But we also are going to work with them on a STEM program. So, we're gonna have a day at the park, and we're going to talk them about tree inventory, tree care. We're gonna be pulling in some other specialists to kind of share some other areas as far as wildlife and environmental water aspects for a nice afternoon for those students. That being said, we thought that we would start this tree campus program with our middle school students. And then, while them, that, that program bill, work within their science department curriculum, and then you have them be and serve as mentors then for our younger students. We met with them a couple of weeks ago, and the science department of the middle school is totally embracing this. So, we're gonna partner with them this next year. We're really excited about it. And we're gonna start building this, kind of keep it simple the first year, and continue to grow that program. That being said, if they were to go in the next year, we only have two schools in the state of Indiana that are recognized right now for this recognition. Bloomington and West Lafayette. Obviously, you've got IU and you've got Purdue. So, they've got strong programs. We're working with them. So, we're really excited. We want to be number three in the state and to, to serve as an example and help other communities to be able to accomplish this as well. But we thought, well, we're gonna start this next year. But in talking more with Arbor Day Foundation, we believe that our Pendleton Elementary School is going to qualify this year. So, we're actually going to submit an application. We're gonna put all of our documentation together showing what we did this year. Let them be the lead. They've done a lot of this work already, and then we'll, then we'll follow up next year with the middle school. But that is all that, that I have here. Just have our summary pictures of activities we do for the urban forestry. Do you have any questions for me or anything?
Good job.
Thank you.
I started off the car.
Good evening, council members. That's gonna be a tough act to follow here, so I'll do my best. Mr. Burmester, you'll be interested, I think, in, in this slide. This is a report of the grants that I have written and submitted since I came aboard in twenty twenty-three. Many of them are small, but they will benefit community development projects, particularly in our downtown, transforming spaces in a lighter, quicker, cheaper method of placemaking. So, you'll see there that the total amount that, of requests was four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, and total awards received three hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So, not too bad. I just want to let you know that the reason behind us submitting the application for the Thomas Pendleton House Restoration is that Pendleton is a certified local government. And so, in so doing, we were able to increase the amount of federal funding to the South Madison Community Foundation for this project and reduce their overall match by about twenty percent. Certified local governments, in case you don't know, are a partnership between local governments, the Indiana State Historic Preservation Office, and the National Park Service. And the point of it is to really focus in on preservation initiatives at the local level. Last year, we wrote and submitted the grant. We didn't get funded. This year, we were notified that we ranked third. So, we did, so the South Madison Community Foundation is going to receive sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. However, unfortunately, given the level, then certainly at the federal level, I, in our staff, are not sure whether they will receive the funds to make these awards. If the award is made, the South Madison Community Foundation will receive and administer these funds and manage the project. I think this is an excellent example of public-private partnerships and one that will protect our communities, one of our community's most valuable assets.
This is for interior and exterior work in South Madison Community Foundation Building, which is the Thomas Pendleton House. And they have also received some HPC grant money for windows, I believe. I have to go back and look at it, but they were the first one to apply for a twenty twenty-four grant, and were allotted. So, this is even more on top of them. Their preservation efforts of that building have been outstanding.
And just as a point of reference, I guess, on the Madison County, the very top on the facade grant, that is from food and beverages, right?
Correct.
And that is administered by our friends at MCAG.
Correct.
They get to help divvy up some of that. So, I just wanted to make that point of reference that when it says Madison County, it's actually food and beverage. I mean, it's Madison County Food and Beverage. I just wanted to be clear about that, that we didn't go to our friends at the county and say, hand us some money.
It is competitive.
Yeah, it absolutely is, yeah.
We had received this three years ago, two hundred and fifty thousand. And when I spoke to Jerry Bridges in twenty twenty-three, he said, apply for two hundred and fifty thousand. We like the program, but we're not sure you're gonna even give that amount. So, when they came back to say that we were awarded two hundred and fifty thousand, that was a, a nice surprise. So, uh, when they came back to say that we were awarded two hundred and fifty thousand, that was a, a nice surprise.
Yeah, and, uh, we, I mean, that food and beverage money, I know that it's kind of a controversial thing, but it literally touches every corner of the county. And this is, and a lot of other communities have looked at our facade grant program as one that they would like to emulate in their own community. So, uh, I know that we're looked at very favorably for our success in that program.
And I believe we were the largest recipient.
The impossibility change with that money has been great.
Um, so some upcoming, upcoming grant opportunities I want to share, uh, totaling, uh, two point six million dollars. Uh, these are from, uh, the Indiana Office of Community Rule Affairs and Indiana Main Street. The funds for both grants are federal, uh, from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development's Community Development Block Grant. First is the Main Street Revitalization Program or MSRP. OCA released the grant instructions just this morning. Uh, this grant application has three phases, a proposal which is due on April seventeenth, followed by a preapproval submission due on June sixth, and finally the application which is due on June twentieth. Eligible activities for this grant include updating streetscapes and rehabilitating downtown infrastructure. The town and Main Street, uh, they apply for up to six hundred thousand dollars for projects costing two or more million dollars. Our project will focus on making improvements to the alley, uh, the Northwest Drive, which is just behind the road buildings here. And, uh, substantial infrastructure improvements would include electric water and sewage, um, to create, uh, and then the goal is to create a more inviting space in, in the alley for business owners, especially restaurateurs who wish to expand their seating capacity potentially outdoors. Other improvements would include, um, a common or hidden, uh, waste and trash collection areas. Uh, the local match is twenty percent, uh, or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The next opportunity is the Preserving Main Street. Uh, this is, uh, a grant opportunity for the two million and is awarded to a single community, uh, in the state. The grant requires collaboration between the local Main Street organization, the municipality, uh, the local community foundation and downtown businesses and building owners. The grant opens on May first and it, uh, the final application is due July seventeen. Um, it's a multifaceted community development program designed to build a sustainable historic preservation, community ethic, build local capacity for Main Streets and serve as a comprehensive revitalization tool. So if we were awarded these funds, uh, we can provide matching grants to building owners for projects beyond facade improvements, including reservation, uh, renovations to structural improvements and also redesign of internal space for mixed use development. Uh, the local Main Street organization must, as, uh, in order to receive these funds, uh, must raise two hundred thousand dollars in prob- public and private funds, of which fifty percent, um, would be used to create either an endowment or revolving loan fund. I'm, uh, advocating for the, the latter, the revolving loan fund, uh, with the remain have to be used, uh, long-term, uh, for the organization in terms of capacity and sustainability. Um, I just want to point out that CBBG grants require a certified administrator to, uh, write and submit them on behalf of the recipient. And as some of you know, um, one of that requirement of assuming this role, uh, was to become a certified administrator. And I'm happy to report that I received my certification this past November and that will save the town thousands of dollars fees, uh, to, but certified administrators charge, uh, to submit these applications. Uh, moving on, uh, first project, the Gallery Walkway. Uh, this was initially began by the Pendleton Artist Society. Uh, as you know, they're planning to erect four to five eight-by-foot, uh, eight-foot by ten-foot framed canvas murals on the west wall of Gallery one nineteen. Um, the project has expanded to transform a dead and uninteresting space into an outdoor art museum. Uh, the Pendleton Placemaking Committee, Main Street Pendleton and the town are now also partnering on this project. Uh, the cost of the murals, um, were eighteen thousand dollars, of which sixteen thousand were raised through private grants. And then the Anderson Madison County Visitors Bureau just recently gave them a grant for two thousand. Funds are still needed to be, to purchase seating, uh, planters and a gateway at the back where individuals can walk safely from the parking lot to State Street. Um, I plan to raise the additional funding, um, for these elements, by, uh, connecting with some local businesses and also with potential, uh, donors to help complete the project. Uh, we did find that there was a utility easement, uh, in this area, which runs in the north-south spa- uh, north-south in the space. Uh, these easements have been recorded and the town will negotiate the maintenance with PES and Martin Insurance. But PES and Main Street, uh, will take care of the general upkeep of this space. So here you can see, um, uh, that space, um, here. I did have, I should have, I've updated this slide since then. But look how boring and unattractive that space is. That port of she has since come down. But these are concepts which Taylor Betts, uh, developed. And you can see, um, how much different this is going to look once we're done raising the money and, and purchasing, uh, the items that will go into this space. Um, I don't know if you noticed it, um, here, but one of the things I think that's pretty, um, cool is that Taylor has, um, this would be painted and Taylor has created here, uh, a concept that, uh, kind of gives the feel of Fall Creek, uh, the falls. So, um, ju- uh, this space is just going to be, uh, wonderful. I think people are really going to appreciate it. Um, they're going to, you know, come here for maybe sit down and eat lunch, um, just gather and talk. But, uh, we're also going to put, uh, additional lighting. I know that, um, Tyler is going to put some lighting under the sopits, uh, on his building. And of course there'll be these gooseneck lamps here that PES is erecting as well. PES is all, PES has also, um, updated their security features, including, um, putting, uh, more, uh, cameras outside.
Before you go on, Carrie, uh, one thing to note is this is lined up with the mid-block crossing. That's why it might not be perfectly lined up, but we're going to get it as close.
So Creative Convergence, uh, this was a technical and project grant opportunity that was supported by the Indiana Arts Commission and the Indiana Communities Institute of Ball State University. Pendleton applied last October. Only ten communities out of forty applicants were selected for this, uh, second cohort that they did. Uh, our team, uh, includes Lisa Boyd, Taylor Metz, Jerry Wymer, Karen Zane and myself. And our group was required to attend a two-day workshop back, uh, in November, uh, in Fishers. Uh, I don't want to bore you with too many statistics, but arts and culture, uh, production account for, uh, um, a little more than nine billion dollars in the United States and one point nine, point nine seven percent of Indiana's economy generating about eighty-two thousand jobs. Unfortunately, Indiana ranks in the bottom five regarding the sector's added value to our state's overall GDP. So this area is really ripe for development in our state. Uh, and communities are really starting to scramble to, um, obtain their piece of that pie. And so I'm pleased to announce that, uh, Main Street will soon adopt arts, culture and creative entrepreneurship as its transformational strategy. And so, uh, more to come on that. Uh, in a nutshell, what we plan to do with the ten thousand dollars that we were, uh, rewarded is to create a temporary arts and culture, uh, trail similar to the popular one, uh, that's, uh, you'll find in Indianapolis. What we're going to do is erect, um, six-foot wooden totems, if we're calling them totems, that will sit inside and be bolted to a steel base and could be movable. Uh, local artists will, both young and old, will be invited to create a piece of art out of that totem. Uh, they'll live be placed at various locations in Falls Park and downtown. We will host a walkabout each month from August to November. Again, the, um, the walkabout will be different because the, the totems will be moved. Uh, there'll be a QR code affixed to each, uh, one of these where residents and visitors can scan it. Uh, they can receive information of, uh, historical facts about a particular area, uh, near where that totem is placed. Uh, general information and a video by the artist explaining their concept, um, and how it relates to the community. Uh, these two, uh, this project will also give residents an idea of how art can transform public spaces. Um, I estimate we'll need to raise an additional twenty thousand in addition, as I mentioned, to the ten we received. And nine thousand of it, uh, will come, of the overall budget here, will come from in-kind, uh, donations and volunteer time. Uh, this is the only grant that, that the town is having to administer. So, um, not a big grant, pretty easy, um, but I do hope that soon we'll be managing two point six million dollars due. The next slide, the Pendleton Citizens Academy. So we've received a three thousand dollar grant from my board's Community and Economic Development Fund to, um, institute, uh, the Citizens Academy. Um, municipalities, uh, as you may know nationwide, are, are doing, creating these academies, academies to build trust, educate their residents and strengthen their communities. Citizens Academies grow local leaders and create goodwill ambassadors and community champions. Uh, our, uh, academy will be a nine-week evening course focused on various aspects of municipal, municipal government operations. Weekly topics will include, include introduction to Pendleton and local government, budget and finance, community planning and development, public works, public safety and parks and recreation. Additional set, uh, sessions will focus on community engagement, leadership, civic organizations and data and statistics. Uh, the academy will begin March with town staff, council and commission members. The first class will start in July and comprise selected community residents. And thereafter, residents will be selected through an application process. So stay tuned, um, and for the invite, and we hope that, that you can join us, uh, in, in this endeavor. Uh, next is the, uh, Indiana Main Street Design Assistanchip Program. There was no money attached to this, but each year Indiana Main Street offers local, uh, Main Street organizations the opportunity to apply for a design assistant for Ball State University Center for Historic Preservation. I'm pleased that Main Street Pendleton was awarded, um, the assistanchip, uh, for twenty twenty-five. Currently, our assistant, uh, Carsten Lincolnfelter is a fourth-year architecture student, earning a historic preservation degree as well. So the planning department selected five downtown buildings, which will, is the focus of Carsten's project. Uh, she's researching the history of, of these buildings and looking at their current uses. And she'll produce a report, including renderings on how the buildings can best maximize their space, including bringing back, uh, the historical, uh, facades. Uh, she'll make her presentation at an event hosted by Main Street on May fifteenth. So also look for that invitation. This, uh, these are the Pendleton buildings here, um, that will be, um, but what you see down here are buildings, um, from Newcastle. They won the award last year, the year before last. And, um, so they, they look at old historic photos of what the building looked like, what the building on the left looks like today, and then they, um, read their, um, renderings and concepts based off of those. Finally, the, um, Master Arts and Culture Plan. Hannah Rose mentioned all the exciting things happening, uh, with the revised comprehensive plan and the new downtown revitalization plan. And so the town and Main Street are working together on an arts and cultural master plan for our community. And as I noted, uh, earlier, the creative sector is really ripe for development here in Indiana, particularly economically, uh, and communities with these plans are at the forefront in, in obtaining their share. Uh, I think Pendleton's proximity to both Anderson and Ball State Universities means we can cultivate arts and culture, entrepreneurship in our community. Hannah Rose and I have spoken with, uh, a nationally recognized firm that develops these type of plans. They are currently working on a scope of work and plan to send it, plan to send it to us very soon. Uh, so far, Main Street Pendleton has raised almost fourteen thousand dollars in private funding, uh, to help pay for this plan. Three thousand one hundred and seventeen came from the Baker Family Fund at the South Madison Community Foundation. And then the, the remaining ten thousand, uh, came from funds left over from the Lilly Endowment's Gift Seven Initiative, which has been jointly managed by the CMCF and the Madison County Community Foundation. So we just learned yesterday that the endowment approved Main Street, uh, for these funds. The nice thing too is now the endowment knows, uh, about, uh, the work that the town of Pendleton and Main Street Pendleton are doing. And so hopefully in the future, we can tap, uh, that organization as well. I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Outstanding work on receiving the grants. Keep it up. Make our little town shine.
We'll do.
He did like it.
He, I, I, he, he asked me quite awkwardly, so, yeah, I appreciate that.
Anything else for Carrie?
Thanks, Carrie.
Thanks, Carrie. All right, Scott, you're up.
We need a break. We're good to go?
We're good.
Okay, I won't, I won't be as long, so, um, couple of points, uh, before I get into my slides is, first of all, if you notice, there was hardly anything to talk about property tax being used for these projects, right? A lot of it is impact fee, which is coming from new development, not the existing, uh, town members. And also how important MCAG is to us. That's our metropolitan planning organization. Just a primer real quick. I know I talked to some of you about it. So a metropolitan planning organization, there's only fifteen in the state. We're lucky to have one in Madison County. There's a large one for Indianapolis. What it is, is allows for a short circuit from federal funds to that MPO. So the MPO makes that decision. Now, it may be administered through NDOT as a state oversight, but that comes right from Federal Highway to MCAG. And, um, and, and so they're, they're so important, as you see, when there was a lot of dollars and a lot of zeros, um, MCAG was involved. So I just wanted to, to make that point. So if we go to the next slide. I do. Oh, I do. See, I wasn't at the rehearsal.
No, it's, he's already, don't go too far.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, so just, uh, some traditional stuff you see from me, just talking about what the employees are going to be doing or have done that's worth looking at. Um, the billing department is, I've received a lot of good feedback on how well they handle people who come in and have questions and then do a good job of, uh, if they need to, coming to, uh, connecting them with somebody within, uh, the back offices or even up with, uh, the, the barn. Electric department, we've had a lot of high winds, where they've had some of the oddest outages. They've been small. A lot of squirrels committing suicide now. I don't know what that's caused by, but between that and the high winds, we've had a lot of little outages. Street department, it's the pothole season, however, the asphalt is not available. So if somebody asks you about potholes, um, the, we think that the closest, uh, opening for one of the asphalt plants is Monday, maybe we, and that's going to be in south, south, uh, part of Indianapolis. And then, uh, maybe a muncie plant may open sometime this week. So we know we've got some deep ones that are causing people trouble. I know I'm a victim of a couple. And then, but in the meantime, they've started pouring some concrete, some patching that has to be left open for watering breaks and such over the winter. And they're trying now to get that concrete poured. So you've seen that a little bit around town. One of the oddest things about the water territory, a big issue, is we do have statistically a high water loss. But it's not, we've come to the conclusion when we bought Banning Inn, it's not from water leaking. We think we have calibration issues. One of the things that we've narrowed down to, when the digital meters were brought in and replaced the old-time meters, is that they were not quite done, the firm that did this, right when COVID hit. And from what the guys have been able to tell me, they found meters that probably should have been installed that weren't. So we know we don't lose a lot of water at night when there's not a lot of demand. Once the towers are full, they don't drop. So it can't be a physical water loss. It's what they call a calibration issue. So we're coming up with all between Tracy and the guys in the water department. We're going to try and nail that down. We wanted to have it nailed down before, um, our, I U C, R U R C hearing that happened today. But, um, anyway, um, just so you know, um, not losing a lot of water, just something's not right with our meter reading. The next slide. Just, um, um, activity highlights. We want to isolate the hotel parcel, make it its own TIF area. So as that goes up, we'll be able to use those funds for some options that we're, projects that we're looking at, some of which we'll talk about possible here in a second. Uh, we're trying even more things with the, the trucks that like to come through our alleys, the semis and go down, uh, semi-turn, the semi-turn, semi-corner. So Ricky and I are constantly trying to think out ways to put up, where to put more signs. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. The chief, please, uh, Mark Farr usually has some good ideas. He's tapped out now. Uh, we're going to try a couple more in some strategic places, mostly. We're going to try a couple more in some strategic places, mostly here by the roundabout. And the I U R C hearing to expand our water territory was today. Not a lot of drama. It was mostly administrative. In fact, the judge and the commissioner didn't ask us any questions, mostly because. The petitioners were opposed to it, which is Anderson. We worked out agreement with them that we wouldn't do any cross terr- cross testimony. Anderson's petition, which has some conflicting areas with Pendleton, our petition, that's going to happen on the twenty fourth. There's a lot of opposition to what Anderson wants to do. You're going to see people from Markville, LaPelle. And their corresponding townships probably show up that one, including us, Pendleton. And then after the twenty fourth hearing, we'll see the decision. From the I U R C over the two petitions where there's an overlap area. And basically, the overlap area for us is everything east of Madison Avenue and north of thirty six. So that's well deep into Fall Creek Township. And then over here in the area would be north, once you go across the interstate, would be north of Old One Thirty Two. So Frederick's Brothers would be in the Anderson area. Mark Farr's house would be just across the street. And then they go well into Stony Creek and right just half mile short of LaPelle. That's one reason why they're very active. In opposing the petition by Anderson.
Do we know what time that hearing is on the twenty fourth?
I would imagine it's going to be one, but I wouldn't put that on your calendar. I probably do have a time. And then the final draft of our new employee handbook is near completion. That's been a really good exercise for us. We've realized some of the things we're doing right, some of the things we need to do better on. Some of the new updates that we weren't aware of, based on employment law and court cases, that sort of thing. Any questions? Okay, so before I get into what I was talking about, what I'm going to talk about, and this is looking, my job is to look more. Put things on the table that we need to start thinking about, making some decisions here. Why do you hear Scott Rusty talk about things that may be so, feel like they're so far in the future that, why do we bring it up? So if it's a project just locally, it's our money. We don't have to follow state standards, federal standards, or whatever. That's usually a nine to eighteen month process. If it includes community crossings, we'd probably extend that out a little bit because there's only two chances a year. And if we don't hit the right cycle, we don't have the engineering done, which we have to have the engine, we have to pay for the engineering. That's, you could see it around twenty four months. Would you see a scenario that would be more than two years on CCMV? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so then also you have that, but now if you get into any sort of federal aid, and that's whether it's coming from MCAG or NDOT. Without environmental studies, back in my day, where environmental studies weren't such a big thing. The design concept to construction completion could easily be, the design process alone could be three years. All right? And then eight years out to construction. So anything we start talking about federal aid, going back to the trail, it's federal aid. Really, we ought to say the clock started in two thousand fourteen, and look how long it took us to get to design phase. We're in design phase right now. We're spending money on it, twenty percent of it's our money. So then, if it has environmental now, it's five to ten years. So environmental can really stretch things out, especially with historic preservation issues, because we're a historic town. We run in, we run into that a lot. They ran into it. NDOT did on the US three six, State Road sixty seven project. Look how long that took them, and that's an NDOT project. So having all said that, the other thing, if it's federal aid. You've got to get in line five years before you may see those dollars. They plan out their dollars five years ahead. So that's why we're into the, we're talking more than a decade on a lot of this stuff. And if you don't try and put things in line for this stuff. Then the next generation or administration or whatever, they're not going to have, they're not going to have those things. So I think it's important to keep that in mind as, as we talk about the next slides. Electric long-range capital projects. Most of the growth, you know, will happen on the other side of the interstate. That's where there's the most open ground. We contracted with MPa to do a long-range plan. We said, what would, look, where would our lines need to run? Where would a new substation need to go? If we were at a hundred percent built out. And so they laid out the different circuits for us. It goes all the way to about twenty thirty six. This first phase that we're going to talk a little bit about, I won't put the other phases in yet. But it's apparent right now, we need to expand the Hammond Station. Once a substation gets to eighty percent capacity, you're into the red, and we're in the seventies already. Plus, we don't have any redundancy. So if that substation goes down, the one big transformer we have there, if it goes down. Then we're probably waiting for three days for a portable transformer substation to get here, and God knows what it is per day that they're going to charge you. To run that. So. Step one, expand the substation and then run a second line across to the west side. Right now, it's about five million dollars is the estimate for all that. That'll take us out to twenty thirty three. We went ahead and bid the transformer, MPa budgeted seven hundred fifty thousand for us. The bid came in at one point four million. Here's the other caveat that makes this very complicated. The winning bid. Thank God, their only, their lead time is a year. The other bid that was a lot higher, they wanted a two-year lead time. So we're trying, and so there'll be a decision coming up here shortly. We're trying to tee everything up and working with Reedy to figure out how to time the bond. But that's why there's a little bit of a cart before the horse. We got to bid before we have the financing in place. Just because the lead time is ridiculous on transformers. And next slide. The water master plan. So one of the reasons why we petitioned the I U R C. Was we started looking at doing a master plan for water, just like electric. We want to know what our, where our mains would run after if we had full build out, so we can plan around all that. When the prices came back for that, it was half a million. I'm like, this is silly for us to spend that and then know. That developers, especially on the east side, are going to come to us outside the incorporated area. And want to tap into our water system. And so that half million dollars we'd spend on a master plan would make no sense at all. Until we establish what our water territory is and have it formally established by the I U R C. And that's what kicked off this whole thing with, with expanding our water territory. So as soon as that's decided, we know what our physically boundary, physical boundaries of our water territory will be based on the I U R C hearing. Then we'll start the master plan, and that'll help us. That will include looking for wells, determining where a new water treatment plan will need to go or to. And where new water towers will have to go in. All right, next slide. Okay, Elm Street to State Street Drain. If you could go to the next slide. So this part has already been built. It goes to Elm Street. And it connects to this metropolitan ditch, I guess you could call it drain. Down here, this is all built out now. It's Kyle Smith's Development, Bravion Point. This is about what we're going to start here, and Denise talked about that. This is the alley. This is the lumberyard. This will be, here's the Pendleton House. If you'll notice, one of our key flooding areas is the Pendleton Avenue and Elm Street. It'll connect this. Then during investigation for all this, it was discovered that this line has collapsed right in this area. And the line literally goes right, you step out of the lumberyard and you're on top of this huge drain line, thirty inch pipe. So the plan is. We're going to see how this all works. Try to keep it, hopefully this keeps flowing for a little bit. And the, the better it works, the longer we can delay this and maybe put our money towards other projects like the Depot Parking Lot. But this, the plan is to come out to here and bypass the collapsed line because it's so close to this building and the building here. That to try and even dig into this would just be disaster and cost overruns waiting to happen. So the line will probably most likely come up into here where Sophie's bagels is. Grab the rest of the water here. There might be a cross connection over here to behind the fire station that's yet to be seen. So we wanted to talk about that because that's on the horizon. Next slide. Okay, one of the things that we have is an action log. It's more for, I won't talk to it much, but just to let you know. Whenever we have somebody come in with an issue or complaint that's of significance, then we log it. When I first got here, we started that log. It was, it was pretty backed up. And then it got to the point where we were only maybe getting one or two a week. And Stephanie was jumping on them, having them solved before I even knew what the issue was. So we sort of put that to the wayside, but we thought this is a good thing to revive. Bring back forward to and, and let you know some of the issues that we deal with. So next. Slide, and that was it. Any questions?
Scott, when they do the water hearing that day, how fast will it take before we hear back from them?
You mean on the twenty fourth of April?
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, today only took ten minutes. Because it was all administrative. It was all written testimony. We've been, I don't know how many hours have we spent just here working on it, let alone the attorneys.
I think you meant, how quick will they turn it around?
Like, oh, oh, oh.
Two weeks, right?
I would say thirty days to sixty days.
Okay.
Because they got to make their decision, then write up their decision, that sort of thing. It's nail biting. I mean, it's, it's important to us, but it's. It's really important what happens because nowadays, the water, so goes the water territories. That eventually becomes the city and town boundaries. So you'll be looking at the future of what Southern Madison County looks like for the next forever. Based on this one decision by the I U R C.
Anything else for Scott?
No, thanks, Scott.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Next time, next time we'll do updates, not go through every detail like we did this time, so just.
I don't know, this has been nice having everybody else talk instead of just. Okay, thank you all for your attention to that. Starting out with old business, we have one item ordinance twenty five zero three rescinding ordinance two zero zero eight, the COVID policy. Last month, we had first read on this, and now we have the whole amount of paperwork in our drive. And so now we would entertain second read on that. Basically, all this does is repeal that policy from two thousand twenty. That referenced additional time off and due to quarantine for COVID and all of that. We still have a few cases here and there of COVID, but we also have had plenty of cases of flu. So I don't know that it's right to still have that on our books and allow for additional time off if you happen to have COVID versus if you have influenza B or A or just generally aren't feeling well. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding this? Nope. Now entertain a motion for approval on second read of twenty five zero three rescinding ordinance two zero zero eight, the COVID policy.
Motion.
Motion of second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance twenty five zero three rescinding ordinance two zero zero eight, COVID policy. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Moving on to new business, we had Brady Rogers from Reedy Financial come in last week and do a presentation for the redevelopment commission. Statutorily, I believe that if it goes there, we have to lay eyes on it. There's no official action to be taken, but it has to be presented in front of us. Steve sits on the RDC and Brian was at the meeting, Scott was at the meeting. And from those reports that I got, the TIFs are healthy and the RDC is performing better than expected necessarily. Anything you want to add to that? Any of you that were here?
Just the highlight to me is we're from, in twenty four, we increased the fund on four hundred thousand range. So that's pretty significant. So I think our balance is one point two million now.
Anything else we want to add or questions? Again, just thank you to Reedy because they hold our hands on so many of these things and present information in a way that we can all digest it. And they have just been a huge help to us. So again, no official action to be taken, but let this serve as, as record that we have received that and reviewed it. Moving on to item B, approval of a bank account for PPD seized property. This is at the request of the police department, I believe. Yes, you need this. This is just an absolute sequester of all of this, separate from the general fund or anything of that nature.
So officers Bertram and E B went to an evidence room training last year. Best practice now, according to that training, is for any money that we end up taking as evidence. To not be held at the police department, but to be held at the bank.
Fair enough. Karen and Willie will be the signatories on that like they are in all the other bank accounts. And that's all I guess we need to do for that too. No official action, correct, Karen? Okay.
Be on record for the bank.
Okay, so SDOA will receive that.
Yeah, I got to say the same thing. The State Board of Accounts does approve, very soon. My concern, I think, even I will hurt before is, if you're talking like drug forfeit your money. And that checking account is drawing interest, who gets the interest? Because a lot of times that money gets returned to. Clients, not necessarily to the police department. So if the State Board of Accounts is good with it, then.
They are. That's the police department, and then they can use the interest for anything that they may need, if I remember, like education or things like that.
I believe that's correct.
Yes.
Not a hundred percent on that portion.
So. When you make an arrest and somebody has money on it, you're not taking that money if, if, if you're not trying to seize it or.
Correct. So we're saying, we arrest somebody for dealing, and they've got three thousand bucks on them. We're going to put it for seizure or wager on it. That's why you take it.
But normal, outside of dealing cases, normal arrests, somebody possession of meth. And the guy, that's all he has, meth on him, and he's got five hundred dollars in his wallet. That's going to go with his property to jail.
Yes, a lot of commissary.
Okay, okay. Yeah, okay.
Learn more than I ever.
So what's, what's the procedure going to be? What's the procedure going to be policy-wise? If that money goes to the bank. Are we getting a court order then? Does the?
We, we don't release any money out that's been filed for seizure until we have a court order to do.
So the individual would come to the police department with the court order or?
Sometimes they get sent directly to us, but then Bertram and E B, they're the only two that have access to the property room and deal with all of that. They would have to make the arrangements to go retrieve the money and either take it and bring it back for a defendant or take it to the prosecutor's office if we do get the seizure.
Okay.
Any other questions? We will have a bank account for the Pendleton Police Department's seized property. And we don't have any paperwork. Do we need a voice vote? We, we don't need any of that, right?
It just has to show in our log that you proved it.
I mean, yeah, I think in order to prove that we approved it, I feel like we need a motion, right? And a second and a vote, I mean, right? Okay, do I have a motion for approval of a bank account for the Pendleton Police Department for seized property?
Just one more question. Is there going to, there's going to be like a policy or a general order showing how the money leaves property and gets to the bank?
Correct. We actually just started working on, on our procedure portions with Lexible, so that's, that's on the list.
And how many people have to sign off on that? Transferring the money and, and/or getting it back out.
Is, I believe, and then again, we've got to lay out the procedure. It'll be Scott and E B. If it's something where you guys feel more comfortable with me as admin signing off on it as well, I have no issue doing that. But I try to stay out of all evidence. It's just, it's clear on our end to just have the two people with access and.
Okay, I really would like to see the policy.
Yeah, I've, I've had no issue with that. We've just got to get that ironed out.
Okay, thank you.
Do we want to wait until we have the policy?
I would like to see the policy. I'd feel better.
Is there a win, I mean, are we missing a window or something? Is there a win, I mean, are we missing a window or something if we, if we wait to see the policy?
I don't believe so. We can start working something up and.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that being.
I just don't want to approve something that we don't have.
How we're gonna implement it, that's right. Okay. We'll push the pause button on that. Okay, um, next up, item C, the perfect seventy seven conversion. We have, uh, this council has previously approved entering into perfect seventy seven retirement. Um, pending the completion of the buyback time, we finally have received this back from I N P R S. The Public Safety Retirement Fund folks, it took us a long time to get this. Um, in conjunction with Reedy Group, we have identified that a ten year amortization schedule. Um, would work best for us. This has been in the Reedy Financial Plan um the last two years, so they are prepared for this to take effect. This year. Lucas, anything you want to add to this?
It's been a long time.
It's been a long.
Yeah, I swear this has been a two year project.
Lucas and Willie have signed their names about eight hundred times. We have filled out the same paperwork about four different times and sent it back.
Wasn't, it was our fault?
Yeah, sometimes it was our fault, some had to live it. So, uh. Any questions regarding this? If there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the ten year amortization schedule for the perfect seventy seven buyback time.
That makes a motion. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Once we send off the first payment of this, um, those eligible will be eligible for retirement. So, moving on to resolution twenty five zero two, additional appropriations for the park and C C I. Um, this was an interesting situation, a curve ball that we know that what we submitted. Uh, was one thing and the state just didn't see this. Um, and so. Karen has worked behind the scenes to get this additional appropriation done. Uh, this looks really scary, like the park needs a zillion dollars. Uh, this is just that they, the state not recognized this part of the submittal during gateway, um, standard budgeting time. So. Correct Karen, anything else to add to that?
All went except the park and C C, C C.
C C, yeah.
Yeah, and for some reason it did not. There were four of us, but it didn't get through all the way. So this is to rectify it. It's the money back and the money, the budget, the amount of, of money for the budget was approved. But not the individual appropriations, so I'm sticking in them and the appropriations from un, unappropriated. And then I will then add it in just the um personal, the supplies, then I'll. Further dial down and, and put them in their appropriation lineup.
Yeah, this is not a public hearing, so I don't have to. Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Great, okay. So at this point, I'll open the public hearing. Is that how I do that there Rob? Okay, on resolution twenty five zero two, additional appropriation. Is there any public comment for this in the public hearing? Anything else that needs to be said in the public hearing? Okay, then I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval.
The move.
I have a motion and a second, or do I have a second? Sorry.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of resolution twenty five zero two, additional appropriations for the park and C C I. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously. Moving on to resolution twenty five zero three, amendment to the comprehensive plan. Pull this up. Anything we need to discuss on this?
Uh, now once you have any questions, uh, the hundred forty six street extension that was identified in our original thoroughfare plan. Um, as a necessary corridor to connect us from thirteen to thirty eight. Um, but the, the line on the map is, is not really practical to work with, so we basically just kind of reworked where those um.
Can you scroll down Jacob to like page four or this?
Oh, the diagram, yeah, you've got that, that'd be good.
Sorry, there you.
Oh no, you're good. Um, so this road here was originally just kind of shown point of least resistance, you know, line on a map. We need a connection from here to here to move traffic as this area develops because it will develop, especially along the highway. Um, this could, is kind of a, a frontage road. Um, you've got a lot of people who are probably gonna want to develop. A little bit heavier uses here. So essentially, we kind of just took a hundred forty sixth street and gave it a little more. Realistic points of access. And this is not engineered. It is still just a line on a map.
Broad arrows.
But, odd arrows, yeah. Um, but it's just, it's a little more realistic when we look at when development is occurring. Um, you know, this property is going to develop next. Originally, this hundred forty sixth street just came right across here. That's where Baker's Point is, Foster's Branch, that's obviously not where it's gonna go. So. You know, kind of evolving what that hundred forty sixth street can look like was the biggest part of this. Um, we also added one very small. Local road over here, if you know where Henderson Way is, where Starbucks and the bank are. All of the property to the east of Heritage Way right by that is all zoned commercial and it's about five ginormous lots. Um, some of them have houses on them right now, some of them do not. Um, but when they do develop, I would imagine a developer would buy a few of them up and do something very large scale. And what we don't want is a bunch of extra cuts on State Street. We want frontage roads like Henderson Way. Um, there are no direct cuts onto State Street for Starbucks, for the bank, for anything else that develops there. And same on, on the north side as new things come in. Wolfies is obviously grandfathered in and so is the subway. So. That was kind of just an addition of the Henderson Way East. It doesn't, I, you know, the alignment of it is certainly not set in stone, but. Um, to avoid and to be in compliance with our access management code, we need to have frontage roads, access roads, and this just helps us give us those teeth.
Great, and this did. No, no, you're fine.
So this becomes really important when a developer comes in, and let's go back to North Heritage Way. When he first presented to us. Uh, he basically wanted to just build a road to, to service that parcel that he owns. So basically would have been a dead end. So we were able, because this is part of the comprehensive plan, no, this has to be a through road. It has to be built in a way that eventually it connects up to Old One Thirty Two. So one thing that's gonna happen very quickly here, we think the game's property that's for sale, it'll probably develop. It's a prime location to him. To our interchange. And so when that gets bought by a developer, we required them to build this road in a way that connects to. The thoroughfare plan and not just a dead end onto his property.
It's kind of copy and paste, you know, Heritage Way, two point O, in a regard, because that is gonna move traffic.
And the one thing that we, we don't want to go back to, but the Heritage Way North slide, when it said that. That's basically being built a hundred percent by it. The impact fee that's being contributed is actually an impact fee that he's generating. From the buildings that are being built. So, um, it's so, so important. It's basically by just doing this, what we did on North Heritage Way. That was seven million dollars of on taxpayer money that's being developed by, that'll eventually be very important to the staff.
And this did receive a favorable recommendation from planning commission on March the fifth, so.
Yes.
It's seven here.
Um, at the very bottom.
And so tonight we just serve as the second read of that. Any questions for Hannah and Scott regarding this? If there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to value approval.
I have a motion and a second for favorable recommendation for R twenty five zero three amendment to the comprehensive plan. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously.
Madam Chair, if I can go. Like, so if you notice those arrows, they head towards six fifty, six fifty is the, it goes over sixty nine. And that's why that lower area. For the area north of the interstate, why you see the arrows all focused a little bit on that six fifty west, because that's where it crosses over. Uh, eight hundred south with, between the county and Ingles, they're gonna build that and eventually. They'll, we'll connect the town, we'll connect that improvement, they'll make eight hundred south, little hard light. And then we'll connect to it and then also traffic or our uh. Traffic flow from the north side interstate will be able to connect to that also. I'm turning gears, but it's not so obvious. When you just look at this map, it just looks like God's lines are pretty significant for our future.
Yeah. Great. Okay, moving on to item F, approval of land acquisition. Scott, do you want to talk about this?
So, uh, talked a little bit about the long range plan for electric. So part of that plan, if you ever want to look at it, I'll be more than happy to give you a, a copy, but don't be surprised if it puts you to sleep. Um, but we do know we're gonna need to put a substation on the west side. A general location that we want to. Put that in was identified by IMPA along State Road Thirty Eight. Lo and behold, all of a sudden a possible actual parcel that we had looked at is now up for sale. Um, the town would like to make an offer for that. I just need your permission to move forward to do that. We had, do have the two appraisals. Um, are in, and so we're ready to move forward. We just need this approval and then we'll probably make an offer to the property owner who are um. And probably make a, an offer to the property owner.
So do we make a offer of appraisal value?
Yes, that's what state law requires. We could go lower, we just can't go higher of the average.
Where are we going with that?
He, he could come back and ask for a third appraisal and then, um, so.
The, the funds for this comes out of this, from now to electric.
Thank you. It, it would be electric capital. It would not be taxpayer. Or property tax money, I should say.
Okay, I have a motion for approval of the land acquisition that Scott's referencing.
Make the motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of the land acquisition for the electric substation. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously. Moving on to ordinance twenty five zero six, amending the U D O. These are in the Google Drive. They, these both received favorable, favorable recommendation. From planning commission on March the fifth. Yeah, would you like to talk about them?
Yeah, so uh, these are a couple U D O amendments pertaining to accessory structures, accessory dwellings. As well as some additional um reference language we wanted uh to reference an ordinance directly in the U D O. Um, that's not always necessary, but it's good to reiterate. Um, so there was a lot of really good discussion with planning commission for. The accessory structures portion, um, and we came to uh these agreed upon amendments.
Great. Any questions for Hannah regarding these? If there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval of ordinance twenty five zero six, amending the U D O.
Make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance twenty five zero six, amending the U D O. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Moving on to the final item of new business, ordinance twenty five zero seven, amending the zone map, void property.
Transfer a tie though, Willie.
Yes, I know, right?
We'll try to tie on this one for you, Willie.
Okay, bud.
Your last option to do it on, so.
I think the petitioner would prefer we not tie.
See her tonight.
Try again next month.
Yeah. Uh, so this is a rezone for um ten acres of a thirty six acre parcel at the very end of six hundred west. Uh, to rezone from large lot agriculture to institutional for purposes of a new church for Solid Rock Baptist. Um, there are some conditions and commitments that planning commission um spoke through and, and were agreed upon uh with the commit, the petitioner. So those are listed here. Um, and then when they're ready to get into plating or site plan review, all those things will. Um, compare that development against our, our code book.
So. It just so happened on a night that uh we had a fifty eight page presentation. He, he was waiting for the last item. So sorry.
Okay, I had a nice nap, so.
We should have to join in border commission now. Any questions for Hannah Rose regarding this? Again, this did receive, receive a favorable recommendation um from planning commission. If there aren't any questions, comments, or concerns, let me entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, approval for ordinance twenty five zero seven, amending zone map in reference to the void property. All in favor signify by saying aye. I'm glad you got it to flex your muscles. Okay, at this point it's eight oh seven and I will enter, I will open it up for public comment. No public comment tonight? Anything from anybody up here? I have one little item, um, the April meeting. Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, sure, come on up.
Hello. I'm uh Bill Moore, fifty six oh three, uh, South Four Hundred West. I don't know. Denise and I have been talking, so I'm gonna bring uh forward uh a plan that my wife and I have and. We were wanting to uh own the west side of the road before you go with the bridge to Nestle. And it's in a corporation that I bought off my father and mother's estate and uh. To do anything with the corporation in nineteen seventy eight, it was a great deal today. It's not a great deal at all to do anything. Um, so we were wanting to build a house across the road on a farm we have there. It's a hundred twenty two acres, runs from four hundred west to State uh, Don't Avenue and three sixty west. And we came in to see about a permit and found out that there is a large impact fee. Uh, and we're just wanting to move across the road. Uh, we're doing some estate planning. Uh, I have one son, three granddaughters that uh belong to him and. He's probably gonna end up with that, so I want to bring my wife out of the corporation and build a new house across the road. And. We're kind of upset that uh. Uh. It's a pretty stiff fee and I don't see any impact we're gonna have that we don't have now on the other side of the road. And uh, we were annexed and at least twenty years ago, I don't know the exact date when we got annexed. But our taxes went up twenty eight percent. And we've never received uh sewer or water. I don't even get cable out there. So. I feel like we paid our share, um, you know. Through the taxes and things like that and owning our land and uh. I'm sixty eight years old, so I'm not gonna be going forever, but I would sure like to get her a house built and out of the corporation. So we can get the estate planned and what we want to do. Um. I just, I just think the impact fee for an individual house, now four tenths of a mile south of me. The Gary or whatever it is, uh, addition, uh, I, I can see. An impact because you're impacting the schools, the, the sewer, the water, the roads. But it's just two of us moving across the road in a new house is what we want to do. So, uh. The only impact I can see is my taxes will be higher for a new house. So, um. The, Denise had asked me what we're gonna do with the old house. I'm gonna work out of the farm just like I always have and I have an office there and I'll probably keep it there for right now. Uh, eventually my son may move there. Uh, I don't know, but that's down the road. Um. I think, I hit everything to talk about. What else you want to add?
So yeah, um, Mr. Moore, he came in with his town halls about a week ago, it was though him and his wife and. She's been great work with and have, you know, these conversations. He explained circumstance and he does want. To build that new home for him and his wife then across the street, a little bit northwest of his current home set. Um, so according to, and I let him know at that time, we take a look at our impact fee ordinance that kind of guides and governs, you know, those, those fees and charges. So, uh, we took a look at that and I expressed to him that I was going to get with our legal counsel. Um, you know, kind of further explore to see because in that ordinance, there are some uh, about three or four um exceptions that are outlined in that ordinance. And, you know, understanding, you know, what he's asking, we fully understand where he's coming from. The property that he does want to develop does not have any existing improvements on that property. It's just a, um, undeveloped, but yet. Crop land, uh, you know, being farmed by him. So I fully understand where he comes from, uh, in what he's asking. I have met with Rob Shine on this and uh him and his team are still in a review of our ordinance to see if. This uh will qualify as an exception to the ordinance. Um, there is a caveat, a part of that ordinance that. It uh, it's prompted, that fee is prompted by a structural permit, but then also too, that. It, uh, it's prompted, that fee is prompted by a structural permit, but then also too, that the improvement would then. Uh, require new roadway, new infrastructure. So having that as a requirement, we need to explore it a little bit further to be able to see if our current road impact fee ordinance. Would require or not require him to make that fee, uh, when he does submit then that building permit. So, uh, I got that information back to him yesterday. He said that he would still want to come tonight. And we opened him, welcomed him to come in, cause it's great to be able to hear from the public and, you know, see how, you know, our ordinance would impact, you know. You know, everyone's eyes, you know, within our community. So I know Rob Shine, uh, he and his team, you know, plan to continue exploring this and. Having some further follow-up discussions, uh, you know, with us and our staff here to be able to get an answer, a definitive answer for this.
And this is kind of an unusual one for us. But I don't want you to feel like we're giving you the brush off, cause this is just something that hasn't happened. In the lifetime of this ordinance, really that's, that's affected it in this way. Um, is this, and I guess I'm gonna ask you Denise, because we haven't had this happen, is this an application for the Impactly Review Board? Or is that more?
It, it, that prompts a formal, uh, complaint process, you know, so if we get that answer back to Mr. Moore and he. Uh, is in a disagreement to that, I do believe that that would justify that board to be pulled in to refuse that. Yeah. So formally, yes, I believe if that, you know, we do find that it does not, uh, mean an exception. You know, we don't want to set a precedent, uh, you know, for those exceptions, but we wanna make sure that we are practicing this ordinance as it is intended.
Absolutely.
So that's kind of where we're at.
What I've told her is one reason we wanna go across the road. In today's society we live in, I have a lot of tools, a lot of equipment. I wanna be close by. And, uh, be able to keep an eye on it. Otherwise, we could go somewhere else, I guess, but, uh, don't, we don't want to. And I have one question. What, what is the park? There was thirty eight hundred dollars for the park. What, what is that for?
That is.
Is it for the park?
It would be for amenities within the park system. So there are certain projects that are outlined in that system, and that is based for a residential, uh, development, not commercial.
The, yes, that. The park impact fee is based off of the level of service and amenities based, based on population and population growth. So they may say. You need four pickleball courts for every ten thousand people, and you, right now, you have three. And so, oh, if you're gonna go to twelve thousand, you need to add an, an extra one or whatever. Like, it's very much level of service based and amenity based. Um, and I don't know if the park impact fee has a review board or not. It may.
Our, our current impact fee, uh, the review board would also.
Also serves that one. Okay, that's great then. Okay.
Well, we wanted to express to you all, we're not completely hard to get along with. If, if it develops. We have no problem paying that fee. We have grandchildren that play there. I walk the trails all summer long. It's a great place, even though I thought they were crazy when they ripped out all the. Turns out, it's been great for the kids and the community.
None of us look at you as being difficult to get along with. This is, if anything, a blind spot in this situation.
I, I will say, my wife would have been here, but last Thursday I took her to the emergency room with flu bay. And then a second trip Sunday, and she stayed home because she didn't wanna y'all.
Well, our best wishes to her. Uh, but, but rest assured that we are working on it behind the scenes and Denise is. The best point of contact you could possibly have. She will keep you posted.
She's been good.
Yes. So thank you for coming.
Thanks, Bill.
I do have a question for you. If, you know, you know, anytime there was ever a farmhouse. Even if it was back in the horse and buggy days, if there were, there were a farm there, maybe well before you.
Yeah, there's the, uh, I tore down the house and the old barn, uh, when I bought the place.
That's all right. Yeah, we.
And, and well, I was gonna tell you on Three Sixty, where, I forget what their names are, but that was the other home that was on that farm. The Moores owned that years ago.
Yeah.
And so there was a house there.
There was a pre-existing structure. We've tended to look at that, yeah, so.
But we would like to stay in the community.
We'd like for you to stay here.
I told Denise, I was planting corn in Mount Summit and on a gravel road, two cars and a school bus passed me all afternoon. I'm thinking. Better than sixty seven.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Any other public comment? Okay, oh, one last thing. So our council meeting is supposed to be April eighth, is that correct? I'm out of town. It'll be the first council meeting with our new replacement, um, council person. It was supposed to be the tenth, I'm sorry. Does anybody have an objection if we move the council meeting to April sixteenth at six P M?
Sixteenth.
Yes, yes. Are you okay with that here? Okay.
April sixteen, April sixteen.
Okay. If we could, let's do it on Wednesday, April sixteenth at six P M. The Thursday date, Urban Forestry is here, I believe, on, at seven or six o'clock. So. Let's plan on Wednesday, April sixteenth at six P M, and we will notice that with that date change. Anything else from anybody up here? Okay, with that, we will adjourn at eight eighteen.